Order. Thank you. The Reed River Street, is someone here to speak on there we have?
Yes.
You just give us kind of a brief synopsis. I know it's the state's kind of holding things up with the states.
I brought a little, just a reminder. Um, I'm Shawna Brunell, Executive Director of Court and Housing Assistance Council. Back in probably twenty twenty-two. We proposed to New York State Homes and Community Renewal, a project for affordable senior housing on River Street. We had to apply, it was the third time before we got approved. So we were approved in March of this year. Um, we're in the process of just doing all paperwork if it's necessary. We have to have the specs and the drawings approved. We had to do an environmental review that everything passed. Marketing study or marketing plan, management plans, there's just a lot involved. So hopefully within the next month, we should have approved plans that we can send to Roy at the code office so we can get a building permit. But the site plan approval and the floodplain development permit, I need to get an extension because it's only good until November twenty-eighth of, well, I think it was twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. So basically, everything's ready to go. You're just waiting for everything to be approved by the state.
Right. And then, um, we should close with the state. March or February, March of next year, and then construction will start. You know, a lot of people think once you close with the state, it'll be another six months or a year. No. You close with the state and they'll be starting construction.
Would an extension of a year be sufficient, do you think?
Yes, yes.
That's your cover.
Yes, and I really appreciate this and I know all the, uh, seniors will appreciate that we give an extension. It's just, it, yes, it's just been a long process with the state. It's just one of those things we can't help.
All right, any questions from the, from the board? With mission. All right, can I have a motion to approve an extension, a site plan extension for the Portland Housing Assistance Council? For the, um, River Street project, thirty eighth street. I'll make my, all right, Mike, second.
Second in.
Jim, all right, further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carried. So you get good for another year.
Thank you. And if you can just include the floodplain development permit extension too. I know Roy's gonna need that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you can make sure like it's in.
Oh, it's, thank you very much.
Very good. Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, um, next we're going to do the fifty-two Clayton Avenue site. Uh, Mr. Pace needs to expand the driveway and parking area to accommodate six vehicles. Eliminate stacked in front yard parking is Mr. Pace here. Do you mind just come up and give us any more details that you think might help the project?
No, the only thing that I could add to it was I talked to Chuck Fiesley. And he thought on his last drawing, he put in either a drywall or retention pond. He said there's plenty of room for a retention pond. When you're on top of a hill and there's springs, sometimes you can dig a drywall and fill it up with water. So, but he said he can get that. But, uh.
So he had both of those indicated on the drawing, but we're just gonna go with that?
Yeah, he'll indicate, he thought he had put the retention pond on it and he had.
Oh, yeah.
He's going to do that.
And where would the retention pond be? Do you know?
It would probably be, it would be on the north side. Only a sign here and.
And according to the notes, the ZBA has already approved the, um, area variances that are necessary. Because I know the one time, did you come for eight parking places and you got it down to six? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any questions from the commission? Here. All right, is anyone else here to discuss the, um, plan at, uh, Clayton now? Anyone else like to speak? You come up and tell us your thoughts.
Okay, thanks. My name is Jim Hokinson and I live in Cary Freez with the twenty-two Stevenson Street. This is just north of Clayton. And we've been here with the, uh, zoning board on September eighth. Um, where the eight spaces were not approved for a variance rate. And then just here last week, talking about some other variances. Uh, but we're still concerned about this backyard parking lot. And I call it a giant backyard parking lot. Um, we live above one hill, we'll still be able to see down into this parking lot. And we also have concerns and really what the planning board's job is, is we have sort of local concerns. Um, Stevenson Street is a busy street. There's local buses that go through. There's student Cortland buses that go through. If you go up to Stevenson and go left, there's actually no sidewalks. So there's a portion of Stevens Street and Street without sidewalks. And by adding this giant parking lot and the potential for that many more cars, there's going to be that much more traffic. Um, so we have some sort of local concerns. Um, we have local concerns and that's bringing in density of students. Um, so with this added density of students, my wife mentioned this last time, I know you're here at the zoning board. When you walk down Clayton, there was trash on Clayton, there was, there was vodka bottles on Clayton. Um, so it's bringing in that density of students. Um, that first zoning board meeting, we and others that were here from the community. Um, it's not that we, we're all here. I think a lot of us are here because of the college and because of college students. It's, it's not that that we don't mind. It's this high density. And I think for whatever reason, the history of Cortland, um, uh, there's more and more places coming in with these giant parking lots. And, and actually, you know, if you go down on Clayton, that's a specific example. So, um, I wanted to share just a couple of general concerns that we'd have. Um, Carrie wants to talk and she wants to talk maybe some more specifics and she may have an idea that we've worked with some other neighbors on possible compromises.
I'm sure you're signing.
Oh, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, hi. Um, thank you for having us, um, us inside every time, um, here. Um, so just as a, just general, I, I teach, I'm a teacher. Um, I teach at the Cortland alternative school. Um, it's a high needs environment. Every day I go in, I dedicate my life to building. Um, I build knowledge, of course. I build empathy. I build our own community so that the students who we teach can, uh, have the capacity and ability to go out into the world and be productive on members of society. I do that every day. Um, and I did today. I'm, I'm tired. Like all of us, most of us are tired. Um, so I build and I come here tonight watching destruction and seeing destruction. The community that I try to build up every day is being reduced to parking lots. Um, the, um, the photos that I presented, uh, if you guys share with the zoning board, everything we give them, do you have that too? That season.
We have seen pictures, but we have the plans that were presented.
Okay, so this is what I saw last week. Um, it's only coming up the street. This was like a block, like right at Y W C A. A block from a little kid's trunk and, um, treat event. Little kids are walking around with little costumes and then they get to see this. Um, that's just coming up, um, as we add, um, this density and these parking lots and these big areas, um, for students to gather. Um, so this again, if you see this, this is probably the most relative right now. This is what we look out at right now. Um, the one right below us, it's a two, two lane. Um, right below that is, um, the, the, there's two properties that have this massive like shared um, communal, um, parking lot slash party central space, um, that we get to, um, here, um, as they're out. Um, this amazing platform, um, on nice Friday nights, today night. Um, so, so yeah, so we're seeing this come up. Um, we're seeing this, this just destruction of community, of neighborhood, of our, our living space. On a nature, of course, these parking lots just cover nature. I mean, nature right now is crying and howling outside. And I have a feeling it's because that she knows that we're in here and we're just adding more destruction to this thing. So, um, with that said, um, we do have an alternative. Um, so a constant neighbor who's really good at CAD, um, maybe while Vibles, um, Chuck Fiesley um, has come up with this and I don't know how you're not to, um, like, look at this, but so this is an alternate because, um, looking at the code now, I know this is zoning, this playing, but last week when we were here, um, we did talk about the fact that while this does cover sixty percent, he's free and willing to do what he wants. It still doesn't meet the zoning rules of parking. So this is still a zoning issue, um, because, um, he wanted two spaces, but he's adding eight um, to his backyard. So the eight plus the current six he has, uh, ends up being like fourteen. We talked about, um, several times now. Um, and he has a garage and a capacity in, um, what is that called? The codes? What is that?
So we what?
Okay.
It's a zoning.
The zoning rate, the rate three oh two or something, um, says that if you have a garage, you should be able to use that, um, as part of, um, the decision. So that's there. So, um, what they, what you're looking at is an alternative plan that still provides the capacity for his six spaces um, that he wanted. Um, it just doesn't take the entire yard. Um, it doesn't take the entire, it reduces our impact on us, um, in terms of looking down on a bunch of, um, cars. It reduces the impact on the environment and the neighborhood, you know, that the capacity and nature back there. Um, it still allows for the ability to park, um, you know, the number of students, um, that he has in there. So we wanted to pose this. We're totally opposed to expanding this parking lot at all, but, um, our neighbor said, hey, I've got this. This is, you know, probably a good, you know, middle ground. Um, I'm willing to propose, so I'm not sure how that actually works, but.
So just to be clear, um, the state has made what parking spaces, I think, than what we have in front of us today. So we have a proposal for six, obviously not including your garage. That's what is on.
Yeah, that's what's presented in six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this shows a lot of.
So the reason Mr. Pace brought forward, right, was to eliminate the front parking that I'm assuming is happening now, people parking out, run around the street. So, yeah, read that correctly?
We knew a lot of stack and one of the issues they brought up with zoning board last week was apparently there was some kids parking on the lawn near the garage on their property. That, that would prevent that, that as well.
That wasn't actually brought up in the last, we didn't, but maybe another time, um, the A R C has had problems with, um, parking on the lawn. Um, we haven't noticed, I don't think, I don't know if they've been living there. This, we haven't listened to coppers in, um, the parking space of the two. So right now there's not stacking. The zoning board was considering, thinking that stacking is better than expanding the backyard parking lot. So, um, um, that's what they had said. So anyway, so thank you. So we just hope you think about the bigger picture, um, which is our community and our neighborhood. Um, and that to keep it a good place for professors like my husband to come in. Um, I'm a teacher. Um, we rely on us, um, as public servants every day, um, as well as students and the businesses that serve them. So I hope there's a nice, um, you know, way to meet in between so that not one suffers over the other and that we all give and take. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That's the back of the house. This is where I am. The fence, their house is on the other side of the green. These things just cut down the last couple of weekends. I did a three hundred and sixty degrees. Nobody could see it, right? Three hundred and sixty degrees. All the way around. The only houses that you can see me standing in the middle of the parking lot was Paul Baragio's house down the driveway. Today they had a truck over there, right? They've covered everything down. I haven't seen the pictures. That's the lot. Nobody can see it. All the way around.
Who else like to speak?
Yeah, if I may briefly.
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to point out, um, the zoning code eliminates, it makes staff parking illegal. I mean, so whether you like this staff parking or not, we have to follow the zoning code and that makes it illegal. Um, Mr. Pace has been able to do staff parking because it was a prior non-conforming use before the zoning was adapted. Our goal is to eliminate prior non-conforming uses and to create a conforming use whenever we can. The six parking spots behind the house are a conforming use. They're allowable under the zoning code. Um, I understand some people don't want the cars behind the house. Other people would probably prefer them to be there. So five cars don't have to move to get one car out. If you have six cars stacked and one of those people living there has to leave early, five people have to get out, back their cars onto Clayton Avenue, which creates a very dangerous situation. Um, plus when cars are coming and going, have to move them around at night. Um, the six cars being moved from the front of the house to the back of the house, actually also in the zoning's view, would preserve the nature of the neighborhood more than having six cars in front of the house would. Um, so I mean, what Mr. Pace is proposing from a zoning standpoint becomes more compliant with our zoning. It's no longer a non-conforming use. Once he does this, he will lose his prior non-conforming use to put the six cars in front of the house. So I mean, it, it's the same number of cars regardless of how he does it. He's just doing it now in a way that will be conforming with our zoning and not against it. I mean, the issue of whether or not staff parking is good or bad is really irrelevant because the council's already decided that staff parking is illegal.
Well, and what we just proposed would also eliminate, um, staff parking as a compromise, which I think that we're trying to, hopefully she.
Uh, so since there's six allowable, that means there's three dwelling units in this R one house?
It's two hundred percent above the two allowable. So that's where you get your six. It's the two allowable plus two hundred percent. So it's six.
Plus two hundred percent, not two hundred percent. So now four.
The ZBA has consistently interpreted it to be two plus the two hundred percent.
Okay.
And that's with a six. That's why the eight would have required a variance. The six does not.
Okay.
Except that you have to, you have to consider according to the court code, the garage. Um, it says in the code that has to be considered, so you have to also follow.
Doesn't say it needs to be considered. It said it may be an option for parking.
But he doesn't, he doesn't use it for parking.
No.
He uses it for storage.
And we can't tell any property owner what to use their garage for. They can use it for storage. They can use it for cars in. They could convert it into an accessory dwelling.
So this summer, um, our kids were living at home. They brought their cars. Um, our daughter worked in Ithaca. Our son worked in Groton. We told them and they figured it out. Whoever had to get up early and go to work, your car has got to be able to pull out and no one else is going to back out. You know, I have to back out and let you out. They figured it out. So now we're asking like, yeah, so we as, or actually Carrie and I as neighbors, you're asking us to allow college kids not, not to learn how to do that. Come on. That's the question. Yes, that, yes, we have read the zoning board regulations. We understand that. Carrie's proposal and our neighbor's proposal follows those zoning board regulations as well. And we are asking the owner to use a parking garage. I would love to have a parking garage. I mean, a garage that I can use for parking. I would love that. He's choosing to use it for storage. We are asking him to use it for parking. Come on.
Anyone else like to speak? On this, uh, agenda? How would the board like to proceed? Any ideas?
Yes, uh, my opinion is, you know, I'm looking at the surrounding use of spaces and what the housing is on that street and whatever has been since I've been in Portland and it's been college housing. And I, I mean, I, I think it's a mess to have people out on the street working all over. Um, I would, I would love to, you know, I'm not a big proponent of letting college housing move in and take over neighborhoods where it doesn't belong, but it, it, it's in this neighborhood and I, my opinion is this is really kind of an improvement.
Anyone else like to voice your opinion? No, I, I agree. I think the parking would be better in the back than on the front lawn and as opposed to the house next door where the parking is like right off the street and it seems on the front lawn, but it's like the house has two fronts. So it seems like parking in the back would be better.
The, the house next door is an A R C house too. So that's some completely different rules than what a house with our normal perp would be.
I'm going down the hill, you know, I'm looking at the area and that and, and I don't know.
I think if you, if you look at a, you know, the overhead view of the neighborhood, one concern I have and is that the you know, if you look, for instance, at, um, the houses on like Pleasant and Monroe Heights, that that the back, there are no yards. That's like completely paved. And so I think there's a major runoff concern that is cumulative, not just one property. Um, you're looking at, you know, a similar situation because of the houses down the hill from Clayton, a lot of them have put in their big parking lots. And then there's another one that's, you know, coming right up to sixty percent. One drywall or one tiny retention pond. I don't know. I just am concerned that, you know, the water on the hill does funny things anyway and, um, there's just a lot more blacked out in the last twenty years than there was before. And I recognize that's not, you know, Mr. That's not a Mr. Pace, uh, for one property, but it is something I think we as a community may come to regret.
Anybody else? All right, well, how should we proceed? What do you guys, what's your, what's your opinion? What's beautiful is to either approve or disapprove what's presented. I mean, the ZBA has already approved all the variances that are necessary. So just us to, uh, go along with that or come up with their own ideas. I mean, Chris, Chris just voted or, uh, spoke his view. Who else?
I think I'm still, I'm starting the same mindset. And obviously you can't, the runoff scan we handle appropriately with the right engineering. And I'm not a proponent of blacktopping everything, but just because of how, what, what this neighborhood is serving and what, what it needs is, I'm still in the same.
I have trouble here. Yeah, there.
I would, I would just have the same opinion, um, that I will flow through. I know, again, I'm not about putting in driveways and killing nature, but not about parking all over the street and, and everything else here.
All right, who would like to make a motion, one way or the other? Any papers on this? I mean, I, to me, it's a, it's an improvement on what's been going on. You know, you don't want to have stacked parking. You don't have cars on the street. This is an improvement. Okay? Uh, that, that's my gut feeling about.
Just, I don't think he, he said it, or he did it, it's all right. Mr. Pace also agreed to put up some of those big ornamental trees.
Hmm.
And I don't know what they're called. They're, they're like a conifer. They're, they're a year round green or whatever the heck they're called.
Block a lot of view, yeah.
We initially with a fence, where he said the way the finding, the way the, the way the ZBA said fence or this I don't know, can't even name it. Big, the year round green
Hmm.
trees to block off that view.
All right, all right. Which would solve some of that problem.
They had, uh, whatever the decision was about that she, uh, the ZBA decision.
Is that what you're not considering or like? I don't feel like it's been considered at all.
It, it would be inappropriate for the board to consider a proposal. We have an application made by a property owner. They can't really hear alternatives proposed by other individuals. They either have to accept or deny the property owner's proposal.
And again, I see it as an improvement on what was there previous to this. That's why I would, I would vote in favor of approving this. That's just my opinion. But I mean, I, I was a teacher too for thirty-one years at high school. So I know what you're going through. But, uh, again, to me, this is just an improvement on what was, what was there previous. And simple. All right, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this, uh. Uh, but make sure I get the wording right. Well, we had, uh, I guess it's just a site plan review. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the site plan review for fifty-two Clayton Ave, as you're saying. With all the stipulations that the ZBA has imposed on it. Can I get a second? I'll second that. All right, Jim, further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Anyone opposed?
Um, sorry.
So it doesn't pass because we needed four.
Oh, right.
All right, let's move on to the next item. South Ave, eight and a half South Ave. We need four. We need, we need a majority of the planning commission. We only have four people here. There's seven people on the planning board. So we just got six people on the planning board. No, I think there's seven.
So there's, uh.
Of seven active, so there's seven slots.
So we, uh, we're, we're going to look for it to be approved. Yeah, per the code, there's seven members. There's currently six members. There's more than six.
All right, so let's go on to South Ave, eight and eight and a half South Ave subdivision. Uh, Peter Ben, Benity, are you here? Can I come up and tell us what you're on to do?
Uh, last week, uh, we could go, the zoning board approved.
Uh, last week, uh, we could go, the zoning board approved the subdivision. And discussed, uh, all the details. I don't know if you had them in front of you. I don't know what, I don't know details to add.
We have the application. I mean, I, we're, I guess we're just looking for a narrative. If you, if you want to fill in any blanks that maybe you weren't addressed in the application. Or if you want to add anything to it that maybe we should be aware of. And like that.
No, I, I think it was pretty much covered last week. Uh, maybe you have questions.
Just, I guess, what's the purpose of doing, I guess, in your words, why we're doing this?
Why are we doing this? It's a simple reason that, uh, I am selling the property. Uh, the buyer has requested, uh, the subdivision in order to facilitate a loan from, uh. For the properties. It's sort of the way he can do it. I'm not opposed to it and, uh. As owner board wasn't opposed, so.
So you're the owner of the property, but you're not actually gonna do the work on it? Is that, is that what I'm understanding you saying?
That's correct.
Do, do you have the person here that's gonna do all the, the work, like work for you? Is he, he, he or she here?
No.
He's selling, he's selling the property. And as a condition of that owner.
Okay, I, I knew I was missing something about that. Th- this has to be approved before.
Well, the subdivision, the, the lender required the subdivision.
Right.
Which. Yeah, which is the issue before you, and then the Z B A. Or I'm sorry, wait a minute, wait a minute. Yeah, and, uh, Z B A provided, uh, the variances, which were all preexisting. Not conformities, right?
So they've approved everything.
Yeah, so the Z B A granted, uh, variances for, um. Uses non-conforming minimum front side of their yards. Or foot vegetative strip, uh, front lawn, less than sixty five percent vegetative. And, uh, parking, not meeting design requirements. Those are granted conditioned on an easement. That, that there is an easement in place that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, so you're gonna have a vegetative strip in here. It says four feet vegetative strip. Do, do you know if that's gonna be included or? I don't know if it is in there.
All right, questions for Mr. Benedict while he's here, if you guys wanna ask. I'm just going to.
So. From the court office perspective. This is the same kind of shift that around everything that you guys did at thirty two, thirty four South Ave. Switching properties around and we were told the situation you put on that is, is a new order. We do some paving back there and clean things up. Your answer is, this is the same owner. None of the stipulations were, were, that you guys put on the other, other project were completed by, by this new owner. That's not, that's not Mr. Benedict.
No, I understand, yeah. So, uh, do we have any authority then to, to stipulate these things we done? I mean, it's, once we approve this, it's pretty much in his court. I mean, what's our, what's our?
I, I don't necessarily don't want it to be, I mean, I'm not saying I don't want it to be approved, but the problem I'm having is.
No, yeah.
Is this new owner is absentee.
Right.
And. Once you, once you decide to do this, like you said, it's, it's said and done. I mean, we can make stipulations, but I can, I mean, I can. I don't know about the repercussions. My concern is, is that this is gonna go down the same row as, as the other property. Nothing's gonna be done.
Right.
So. I would prefer it get done before the properties sold. Which is not gonna be done by the way of that because paving and everything else, so.
Self call on our part, man, really? And it puts us between a rock and a hard place.
I mean, again, I want to stress this is not Mr. Benedict's fault. The important part is, is this new. This new guy is not, all, 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 all the stipulations and the conditions you put on the other property.
Right.
None of it has been, none of this was done yet.
But the, the buyer of the other properties that has since gone through. He's maintaining the properties and the, the grass is being cut, the litter is being picked up. Improvements are being made internally to the apartments. And I did get a quote for the buyer. Do that, uh, paving that, uh, was required. The quote is twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, I know I couldn't come up with that money right away. Maybe it's gonna take him a little time to put that money together. That's all I can say.
Thoughts, you guys?
Well, if it's gonna take him that long to do the improvements there, it's not gonna get done here anytime. And, I mean, I, I don't mean to penalize.
Is it the same person?
You're assuming. You're making a big assumption.
Is it the same person that bought the previous property? He's, he or she is buying this property.
That's correct, yeah.
It's not very good, let him track her after me. But he's not here, it's not great.
No, he lives in New Jersey.
Jersey, okay. I know. Hey, Jim, any thoughts?
I mean, I, yeah, I don't think we can require the potential buyer to come in and talk. To approve this, but without that, we almost. They make that hard to approve that.
Right.
Right.
Right, but I shouldn't be penalized.
Right.
On a previous deal either.
Right.
We're, we're getting into some legal territory there.
Well, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't have the city out, the trap and things up in the smaller. Just to benefit somebody, you know, man, I mean, not wanting.
Yeah.
All right, and what was the, there it is, it was, uh, just like three or four things, I think.
Both properties had multiple bases.
Right.
Both properties are preexisting non-conform uses. We'll read, we'll read it in that. Um, the county did say that, uh. Can read the bottom of the county. The county said the dwelling would be now eight South Ave. Meets the needs and the current county, um, company has a plan for lower income housing. So they felt that that building was a need in the, need in the county and the city, which I agree with them. Again, I'm, I'm, so, I'm not trying to make a suggestion. I, I don't know what the answer is, is why I put it, I, I do not know what the answer is. Cause I, I, I agree with you guys. I, I don't think you should not approve this, but on the same token. How do we move forward to make sure this work is getting done to approve these properties?
Just. I don't know if this will help or make things more confusing, but how did this lot come about with? These different build, like at some point, these must have been.
Yes, I have no idea. I really, I mean, you know, some of, some of the things that I come across on, on daily basis doing this job is just. It bothers my mind how, how was ever approved in the first place.
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about Park Avenue neighborhoods.
Right.
This lot had. Two outbuildings, a single family, a two family and then they, and a. Um, a rooming house. Well, actually, the rooming house is a, is a split. Commercial building. It has a company, it has a commercial building, a universal. And then right behind it, you have two single family dwellings that are different addresses, obviously, but. Again, I'm not against this by any means. I just do, when you don't know the vehicle or the vessel, we can use to make sure this work gets done.
Uh, has anybody contacted him and discussed this with him?
I don't even know who the new owner is. I mean, you know. Well, what do you guys want to do somewhere online? You know, approve it or not?
It's really my job to follow up on it. I just wanted to make it known that. The, the new owner is not follow through on your other one.
Right.
I mean, I will, if you, if. If it is approved, I will fa- also follow up on this, but I want the same stipulations. It's gotta be paved, it's gotta be, you know, that middle driveway's gotta get. Cut off, right?
Yeah, and, and I want to add, the new owner hasn't said he's not gonna do it. He just hasn't done it yet. It's the only thing.
I mean, my world back is, we're, we're not making an improvement, improvement. You look at it and you make, you're taking a non-conforming and just making it more non-conforming, to be honest with you, if you're looking through the notes.
Right.
Um, and, and for what? I mean, I, I don't understand, I.
Uh, unless, unless you're gonna bulldoze that whole block. That, that's what we have. That's the reality of that situation. You, you're looking to make it beautiful. I, it's gonna take a lot more money than an individual has. That's gonna have to be a public works project. Otherwise, you know. I've been waiting two and a half years to finalize the last part of the deal. And I'm asking that it be approved, that's all.
I understand.
He did find more parking for. The. The rooming here too. Which every user had.
What's the benefit to the purchaser to do this?
The benefit is, 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 it, the bank won't finance and the same thing to happen with the other one. The bank he's using will not finance three buildings on, on, on the same property.
But particularly since this, say, south is commercial property.
Well, if you guys wanna go. Tell me. I mean, we, we do need more housing. That's, that's definitely, uh, you know, a no brainer, but, uh. How do we get the new owner to upgrade this place, you know? Maybe, I'm not saying make it look, look like Taj Mahal, but. You know, make some basic improvements.
So Mr. Benedict is right. That is, once, once you guys make the decision, that is my job to follow up on, on. On your. Decision soon. That I will do.
We're, we're only looking at the subdivision. We don't know any. Plans of.
Right, we're, that's what we're, which we're either approving or disapproving today, just dividing the, the two properties, eight and eight and a half. I guess you could look at it that way too. I mean, this Z B A is taking care of all the necessary variances, so that's not an issue for us. It just, whether, whether we wanna subdivide these two properties or not.
I mean. It makes it, if it makes it more saleable. And then whoever's buying it will be able to. You know, it improves the property value just by being able to resell it. The property can't be sold because of. The lot and the buildings on it are. An odd configuration. That's, that's not helping anyone either.
True. Like, I agree.
Makes sense.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the subdivision, um, with the stipulations that the Z B A has imposed on it for the unnecessary variances. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Chris, any further discussion?
All right, all those in favor of, uh, approving the subdivision of eight and eight and a half South Ave with the Z B A's, uh. Necessary variances, say aye. Aye, 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 opposed. All right, motion carried. All right, good luck. I hope he makes those changes though.
Yeah, the new plat, so he can sign it, they can get it on the counter.
Section?
The new plat.
Do a lot planned, block on him.
Yeah, you, you don't have that tonight.
Well, we have the, uh, electronic version, but.
Yeah, um, those copies that he provided, those are. Yeah, I will get them.
Cause that way. They'll save you a check, Joe can. Put his name on it now, okay, to get it, take it right over, over the county as a good.
And, uh, I will talk to him again about what's expected. Trying to push him myself.
I mean, this, you know, these guys gone financing by doing this.
Yeah.
It's just, it's in good faith to follow through in what they, on, on the, like, conditions they put forth.
I'm gonna convey everything, you know, that you're expecting.
I mean, you know me, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna have to drop the hammer, but I, I will if I have to.
But I, I gave you, I gave you his number, right? Once, uh.
Oh, here we, here we have. We talked about the junk vehicle down there earlier.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you see any agenda from last one to me? I didn't see anything.
And going to get postponed?
Oh, maybe it was two months ago. I guess we must, no.
Two months ago it was canceled because only two items were.
Oh, that's right. So we did approve. I, I was saying we had to approve more, more.
No, you're right. I forgot about that. We didn't have.
Yeah, I forgot too.
Yeah.
So I didn't, I thought maybe I just didn't see him or something. We have three more things. When Andy comes back up, we can finish these three. We got two twelve Tompkins Street. One thirty nine North Main and fifty, I'm sorry, eighty two Tom Run. Sorry about the delay, you guys, people that are here, so. Usually meetings run much smoother. That's. Usual. Well, well, waiting.
Copies.
Do you keep one? Just then one?
Very knows you're gonna take that over and you have to file it down. Benedict, you did really own, yeah.
All right, thanks.
Here, ED tip, sign home market.
So this is from, uh. C B A last. Wait, so if you sign one for me and then. Relations, maybe, yeah, this is what I was supposed to pin them, right? So I'll take that down.
All right.
All right, is anyone here to speak on behalf of the Tompkins Street, um, proposal? That's the, um, shed for clothing. Use clothing.
I can't answer any questions right here.
All right, um, it's pretty straightforward. They just wanna build or to put a shed at, uh, Tompkins Street for the clothing. Hey, put it as like old clothing. Did you guys have any questions about this? I thought it was pretty straightforward.
Just the tie down requirements by owner was the only question I had on those plans. I just wanted to make sure that they were.
So the work was already, already done. They were kind of fair, so they showed the waiver out and. It's where, where, where is on the plans? We don't have an issue with it. It's not a buzz zone.
Is it anchored down though?
Yeah, it's.
How is that?
Oh, yeah, my question, okay. Uh, can I have a motion then to, let's see. Oh, wait, click in the line, and here it is. Ecology is a wonderful thing. I need a motion to approve the site plan review for two twelve Tompkins Street. The area's legion seeks approval of plans to install a shed to collect clothing donations. To collect clothing donations. Uh, the Z B A has already approved the necessary variances that down there, uh, October twenty-seven. And I have a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Jim, can I get a second?
A second.
Mike? All right, further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right, motion carried. All right, next on our agenda is, uh, one thirty-nine North Main Street. We've got, uh, Syracuse Recovery Services is seeking to relocate its substance use, this, uh, disorder outpatient treatment office. From its current location on Uport Ave. Anyone here to speak down there if you have? Don't get to sign it.
Making styles on the applicant. And what you just read is what I'd like to do.
Why, I'm just, I'm just curious. Why do they wanna relocate? That would be my only question. I mean, I, I don't necessarily have a problem, but I just, I just want to be curious why they are relocating.
Well, the property at six Uport isn't awesomely maintained. It's had a lot of improvements over the last couple of years. But it's not great and. It is, our suite especially is not. Good. And this is our own. We're gonna be renting this as a standalone clinic, right? So right now, we are in a suite with other places.
Right.
The only other one that's rented out currently is Cars. Um, which is great. I'm glad that the community has that option, but sometimes that makes things difficult for the people that are coming to our program.
Right.